The regular meeting of the Cyrus City Council for March the 6th, 2018 will come to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd also like to at this time have a moment of silence. A good friend of the city, someone who invested a lot of time, effort, especially into our younger people through the tennis program, Sam Seaback passed away. It was an absolutely beautiful service that was held out at the cemetery and people from all different generations, even back to me, were there to say their thanks to him for everything that he provided to our community. May he rest in peace. One other announcement before we get started this evening. We are back on Access TV, that's either Channel 6 or Channel 9 on your TV set, and those will be shown live and also will be shown twice a day, Gary, my understanding? At 10 and at 4?
Yeah.
10 and 4 every day, council meetings are shown over and over. Also, we are putting it out on YouTube. If you go to the city website and go to government and then to council on that dropdown, and there is your link to the YouTube version of the council meetings which we'll be putting out there. Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers. Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sacks.
Poe.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
I need a motion to accept the minutes from the February 20th, 2018 regular meeting. So move. Second. Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept the minutes from February 20th, 2018 regular meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Our first speaker this evening is going to be Police Chief Dave Keckey with his 2017 annual report. Chief, all yours.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members of council and the administration, and thank you most of all to everyone in the audience this evening. This is emotional for me to see this overwhelming outpouring of support from our other agencies, our auxiliary, Guardian Angels, BORN, the Positive Seekers, too many to mention, and you all are what makes us as police officers the same as you. We are you and you are us. We're all in this together, and that's... Actually, that's a summation of my whole report if I wanted to stop there. That's really what it's all about. Busiris, I believe in Busiris and I ask all of you to believe in Busiris. Busiris is a family. I think in different ways as we run into each other, we experience small moments in time. I have problems, you have problems, the whole world has problems, and from moment to moment we have no idea what's going on in the world of the person next to us. In a nutshell, that's what a police officer experiences every day. One moment we see one thing but we don't know if it preceded all that, as we'd call it drama or whatever, but it's a lot of it's heartache. And when you talk to police officers, you're talking to all the... They absorb all of the stuff that everyone goes through. Police officers do absorb all of that stuff. And just today, in the last 24 hours, actually, I wrote what I wanted to say, but I'd rather just speak of what touched my heart. Last night, we were the beneficiary, and this is in honor of all our safety forces. Can I just ask you, Carolyn, to show that to the camera, maybe so everyone can appreciate that? She's right back there and up there. And that says it all right there. All safety forces serve the public and are made up of the public. And that's why we're willing to sacrifice our health to serve the public because we're protecting our families too, and you're our family. Thank you, Carolyn. And last night while we were taking pictures with our friend Rascal there, a young lady came to the police department, and she was in tears because somebody amongst all of you out there, somebody did the right thing, found her wallet with all her belongings. She wouldn't mind me saying she struggles today. She does not have a paycheck to go paycheck to paycheck. She has nothing. It was all in that wallet. And when somebody did not steal her credit card and other stuff and put her through the agony of having to run amok with the court system and everything else because she didn't have a social security card and things like that, we take that for granted. She was in tears of joy because somebody did the right thing. And it goes up and down like a roller coaster every day, and there's tragedies that happen. We've had so much tragedy in the last two weeks, it's too much to bear. And that's our brother, our brothers and sisters and other agencies dealing with fatalities. And there's been funerals like Sam's, who served in the community, but not for me. Everyone reads the papers so you know that. So there's that roller coaster. And then somebody with a parking problem calls. In the midst of all that, somebody with a parking problem calls, but it's an interesting one. If not for all the hardworking people in our community, we wouldn't have any safety forces to talk about right now tonight. And somebody works from 2:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. She has four kids, and she has to go back to work after that. How do you sleep between 2:00 p.m. after driving? I know at 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 you sleep and you get up. Who's watching the kids? Think about that. As we have grandparents and great-grandparents helping raise kids in our community. But she's a young lady trying to get things right and earn a living for her household, and we have to patrol the streets for parking violations, and we do our job and we do it well. She has a disabled vehicle, it's been ticketed a couple of times, and she paid the fine. She wants to do the right thing. She made a mistake. She's sorry and pays the fine. She gets a third... About to get the third ticket, and she's in tears. I have no idea what to do. She has no one to help her. And all I could do is just suggest, are the people around here that can push the vehicle? They did get pushed off the street finally. She didn't understand. And she didn't understand that she couldn't just leave the vehicle in front of her house. This is the personal connection to people in the community, but after that 15 minutes, the next day, everything's okay with the vehicle. She has an understanding, she's back about her business, okay. Just a short little picture into an individual's day-to-day, which we forget about. And as I was preparing to speak tonight, I wanted to express to everybody how thankful, personally, I am and how thankful the police department is for the public's support. There's so much to be thankful for, and time is one thing. Time is precious, and we are reminded of that when our friends pass. And in our police family, this last year, we lost John Stanley, who was one of the first air officers in Ohio, and there's a connection to that later on. And we lost Ralph Grubel, who was the backbone of our fraternal order of police, our brotherhood of officers and sisterhood. But we did not realize how much Ralph did for us over so many years to keep us together and maintain, structure the organization because that is so hard to do. And we were thankful for that time that we had with them, and then we reflect on the times, the parks that we met, maybe we need to address with each other before it's too late. I'm thankful for Busiris and having the opportunity to serve here. I'm thankful for what Busiris is, all the citizens we serve, thankful for all of our civic organizations, the volunteers that make our events happen throughout the year, our parks, our schools, our theaters and churches where these events happen. Thank you for everyone that coaches and mentors kids like Sam, who inspires... And there's, between the police and fire department, we have a program at Harmon Park that has served in about 16 years' time, if it's a multiple of about now 300 or 400 kids a year. If you can take... That's a lot of kids, and it was fun this evening to run into some of them on the street. Why we do that is because when I pull up at a corner, they all can run up to me, and I know their names and they know me. And that's why we do things like that. I'm thankful for all our businesses and the hardworking employees, most of all that work hard to keep our city going, to make all of our city projects possible. And I want to speak directly to my wife, who's one of those people, because I'll try to be brief so I can see her face tonight. Thankful for all the service, all in service field such as healthcare and schools, especially our teachers that work with our children, our future every day. And thankful for the Busiris schools and the opportunity we have to be partners with them. And this is part of our state farm neighborhood assist grant, which the citizens made happen last year so that we can have age-appropriate drug abuse education, K through 12, which that's a great thing to expand in our school with our school resource officer Joe. I'm eternally grateful to the officers and dispatchers I work alongside. It's hard to speak after 29 years of looking at the ones that raised me as an officer in the audience. It's hard to speak about that, having soaked up all that drama over the years, and there's no way to speak about it without a touch of your heart. You're all my brothers and sisters, and I love you. The dispatchers take on the toughest calls, the dangers, and the officers take on the dangerous calls on the street, the ups and downs. They take them all in stride. They are tough and resilient, gentle and kind. And you are the ones they serve, and I'll say it again, you are the officers and we are you. We're in this together. This positive service attitude goes beyond our department to all the other agencies that we work with in public safety and fire and EMS and our other enforcement agencies that share this... Well, it's trauma. They share that with us every day, and we hear the sirens going up and down the street every day, wondering what's at the end of those. And it's good people like everyone here, it's at the end of those, and you can count that, attend on for your safety and security. I want to thank the citizens for your support, and thank you to the Positive Seekers who signify that support with the review that we're so pleased that you thought about all of this. I'm almost done, Carolyn. That's truly an honor to all our safety forces. Thank you to all who serve in public office. Thank you to everyone here because you made the tough decision to stand up and represent your neighbors and to represent the people's business, representing and serving all of them. Thank you for that. Thank you for your dedication and time away from your families to serve our Busiris family. Thank you. I thank God for Busiris, and I pray that we make the most of our time together, knowing that we will always fall short of little. And we see that at these meetings. Is anything ever really truly resolved? No, it's not possible to resolve all of those problems in one meeting, but I pray that we will continue to work together, always having the willpower to return and keep working together for the betterment of Busiris. And I'll segue to the story of Busiris as far as the police department goes with our annual report. I'll seek to get it published on our Facebook page. I hope it can get on the city website. I know a lot of you have reviewed it already. Some of the high points of the year, of course, were the ability to work with the DARE program again, that had been in the sixth grade through the work of the sheriff's office. Now we have the local grant, the state farm neighborhood assist grant, which allows us to have that K through 12 coverage in our Busiris schools. We're fortunate to have school resources officer program in our school, which is, I'm not going to rehash all that in the media about that because Busiris has been ahead of that at every step of preparation and security for our school system. I want to thank the citizens for the neighborhood watch program and Positive Seekers and organizations like BORN that I spoke to, to some of our community's struggle with poverty, and BORN is there on the front line trying to help people that need help today. They need so much to stick their hand out. I'll give them a chance. And I look forward to speaking to BORN tomorrow night. With your support, we modernize all our equipment, we live updated procedures to better serve you, and we'll continue to do all our best to be good stewards of those resources. And the one resource that we fail to mention all the time is positive relationships. That's the backbone of policing. That's the... We've been following since the 90s, community-oriented policing, and that, it's the community. And we're going to work together like our mission to address problems, recognize problems, and work together in partnership with the public to try to solve those problems. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening, and look forward to talking to you more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Does anyone have any direct questions they'd like to ask the chief now? Carolyn, you said you had something you wanted to say.
The Positive Seekers along with the mayor, am I correct? Is proclaiming the month of March, safety forces on in Busiris, Ohio, and that was the reason for this brief?
I've done it for four years.
Four years now.
This will be our fourth year in this, our safety forces. It's our police department, it's our ambulance, our EMTs and our ambulants, it's our fire department, it's all the different groups and organizations that work together to help make this community better. It's even the folks in the hospitals, you know? All of these people contribute to a safe community, a safe, healthy Busiris. We thank you so much.
And welcome down. Anthony Busiris, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 68, that asked her to speak to council this evening.
Yes. Madam President, if you don't mind, it's my understanding that a former chief would like to speak first. He has prior engagements.
Okay.
Mayor with us, Chris Wood.
Chief, chief! Thank you very much.
An introduction.
Thank you for everybody that is watching on TV and...
I'm going to go through the usual road there where Kenji takes 75, head drive, Busiris Public County, Ohio. I do recognize some familiar faces here. Look at my comments. But I don't have a political agenda, and I don't have any political aspirations. The real reason I'm here tonight is an old adage that I'm a firm believer in, and that's those who forget history are doomed to live again. And I can talk about my experience for a number of years, and as the award-winning auditor can attest to, that, you know, we had to be creative on our fundings, and we still managed to get by. But I had the unpleasant duty of referring and conducting lectures to different organizations, the media, and interested neighborhood groups on some of the terrible and embarrassing statistics that we endured during my tenure. I'm talking about double-digit increases in many categories, obviously including, you know, that drug abuse, violent crimes and whatnot. And I just, you know, was used to coming before council and committee meetings and basically begging for resources. And, you know, here I'm retired, and I'm back before you begging. Do not be short-sighted in your funding reviews. Don't short-change the citizens for... You may be able to get by for a few months, but ultimately, long-term, it's going to cause these double-digit increases to reappear. And my successor is going to go through the embarrassment of responding to these numbers. I'm also a firm believer that there's a direct connection between proactive and reactive police tactics. Basically, there's always a certain amount of reactive activity that the police department's involved in, but with enough manpower, enough resources, and proper resource management, they can explore a lot more proactive tactics and issues that can be tough to bear. Also, there's also a proven connection with a number of personnel with some of these numbers. I came to council on many occasions, and it indicated that the FOP recommended band call management was somewhere around two officers per thousand, and Busiris has never been that close to completing that number. And it was on the verge of getting reported, or he was approaching that with the passage of a levy. Mayor Reeser was instrumental in assisting some of our previous levy attempts. I have not forgotten that job, and there may be some people that hear that not forgotten, but I have forgotten. But we need to be vigilant, and I'm not bored with my current capacity as a recluse. And I think I'll be saying something that I have to say. It was time. I stand for any questions.
Good.
I'm late for my nap in my car.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, that's a hard act to follow, isn't it? For those of you that know me, but for the record, I will say who I am. My name is Tom Walker. I've been an employee of the Busiris Police Department for over two decades. Currently, I hold a post of lieutenant in the police department. And tonight, I come to you on behalf of the men and women, both retired and active, and their families, the Busiris Fraternal Order of Police Incorporated Lodge Number 68. I will ask that you bear with me. I would like to address a letter, or actually read a letter that has been addressed to the city council as well as the Busiris community. I believe you all should have a copy of that letter in front of you. And then if you can bear with me for approximately one minute after that, I have a comment that I would like to direct toward the city council and this body. The letter is dated February 25th. I hand delivered the letter to Mr. Hill's office, who's past prime. And it states the following. Honorable Busiris City Council and Busiris community, the members of the Busiris Fraternal Order of Police Incorporated Lodge Number 68 extend our gratitude for the opportunity to give back to our community as members of the Busiris Police Department. Our mission is to provide the best possible service to our citizens and create a safer environment for our children and businesses to grow and thrive. It is in the spirit of public safety that we appeal to you today. In August of 2017, Mayor Reeser released a letter outlining the administration's desire to transfer emergency medical services to the Busiris Fire Department. Shortly after the release of that letter, members of Lodge 68 met with Mayor Reeser and Safety Service Director Wagner, and we expressed concerns of overfunding this endeavor. Specifically, our membership detailed the extensive and unnecessary gamble with taxpayer dollars and in the process, creating gaps in police services. We also stressed the importance of properly funded law enforcement, and were assured Mayor Reeser felt police services will paramount to the community's future, stating no funding would be taken from the police department. In turn, the members of Lodge 68 drafted a letter which is attached to the letter that I provided to you, outlining our concerns and made it clear we would not remain idle while our community fell into disarray due to police cuts as it had from 2008 through 2013. As of this correspondence, the Busiris Police Department has downed three officers due to retirement and resignations, and none have been replaced. From 2017 to 2018, the police department funding was slashed to a minimum of $275,000. Through conversation with Chief Keckey, I understand that number is almost twice that much for the total budget. The number we have there, by the way, the $275,000, is strictly off of the salary line. So you're aware the number is much higher. Leaving our police department financially incapable of recovering from and sustaining the loss of officers and services created by this cut, or by these cuts, my apologies. The primary services affected by budget cuts are in the areas of patrol and the detective units. Patrol officers are our frontline responders to the community's needs, and any reduction in this area will inevitably create longer response times and greater risk to officers responding to violent calls, similar to the one recently in Westerville, Ohio, where two police officers were killed responding to a domestic violence call. The Detective Bureau is responsible for drug and violent crime investigations as well as submissions of evidence, drafting search warrants, or, excuse me, and drafting search warrants on drug houses. The Bureau has been reduced to one part-time detective with hardly enough time to keep up on evidence submissions and grand jury preparations. Not so long ago, citizens were routinely reporting heroin needles lying in front of homes and businesses. Overdoses were a daily occurrence, and neighborhoods were overrun with drug-related vehicle and pedestrian traffic. In 2013, voters overwhelmingly supported the public safety levy and with an adequately staffed police department. Members of the FOP Lodge 68 finally had the resources to make profound impact on Busiris' drug epidemic. Our members focused nearly all of their resources on heroin investigations, and our community has finally turned a corner. Recently, local media sources... Recently, local media sources spotlighted our community's drastic crime reduction of as much as 60% in some areas, indicating Crawford County has risen from one of the most heavily impacted by heroin to one of the best in the state. And I believe attached to the packet that I gave you was an article where we have received national recognition for that effort. This is a byproduct of strong community support, strict prosecution of the offenders, and the superior investigative efforts of Lodge 68's personnel, the people in service, or people in services in jeopardy due to these budget cuts. Currently, the members of Busiris FOP Number 68 are experiencing a resurgence of crack cocaine, methamphetamines, and firearms. These are all for you to see on our Facebook page. I believe Chief Keckey is vehement about making sure the public knows what we're doing and that those are recorded. Crawford County has been rocked by a disturbing trend of bomb threats, and school violence across the U.S. is quickly becoming a concern for everyone. If your police department... This is not ours. This is yours on this body as much as it is the citizens of this county. If your police department is underfunded and understaffed, it cannot proactively keep drug dealers away from Busiris and efficiently address these other issues. Our city's history has clearly shown budget cuts to police lead to an increase in criminal activity as it did from 2008 to 2013, and leaves our community vulnerable. To help prevent Busiris from losing ground, Lodge 68 members will not remain silent, and we are asking the community to do the same. Therefore, the Busiris Fraternal Order... Therefore, the Sires Return Order of Police Lodge 68 encourages citizens to demand a change in this potentially devastating cut for the Sires Police Department. As voters, you provided earmarked funding to ensure the financial stability of your safety services, and those services are in jeopardy once again. It took a community to rise above the heroin epidemic, and as a community, the members of Lodge 68 will stand with you to keep Sires safer for everyone. Professionally yours, the Sires Return Order of Police Incorporated Lodge 68 is accompanied by a signature page of the members of FOP 68, as well as the VP's support staff. In my tenure with the Sires Police Department and with the Sires Return Order of Police, I have... We have routinely, and I think our retirees can probably attest to this, we have remained silent and allowed this body and the leadership to do what they need to do. We do not relish being politically involved. My hands are sweating like crazy. We are not politicians, and we do not pretend to be. But we feel that this is important enough, and we finally make a stand. Now, I know many of you I've known for years, and you have my profound apologies for that. But whether you're new on this city council, or whether you've been here for many, many years, I can... I know that you've come in here to this job wanting to do the best you can possibly do to the people you represent, and you have best interest of this community in mind. The only difference here is that we all have different ideas as to what is a priority and what is important. I know that you are all leading with prudence, and that you are trying to do what is in the best interest of this community. As Brother Tease had mentioned, and I do love the phrase, "History is recorded so that it's not repeated." And ironically, just so you understand what the most recent news, as we were coming up here, CBS had a special on that was outlining a 30% increase in overdoses in Ohio. However, again, the statistics show that through the efforts of, combined efforts of the community, the prosecutors, and the police officers here, we've turned a corner in this We do not believe that cutting police resources are prudent or are in the best interest of this community. So we ask you simply to do two things for us while you are making your decisions. One is to consider this perspective that we bring to the table. When you are making your decisions, please keep them in mind, that you could drive 15 minutes in either direction and still be experiencing guns, violence, and heroin overdoses in record proportions. And the second thing that we would implore you to do is to reinstate the resources so our membership can simply do our jobs the way this city deserves for them to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Again, I stand open to any questions. I do need to preface that with, I can only answer questions from the perspective of the Fraternal Lodge. I cannot speak for the Labor Council or can I speak for the Sires Police Department, so...
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? This is the time.
It can be on anything.
That's why we're here. We need you to state your name and address, please.
My name's Leslie Johnson. I live at 3540 Crestline Road. I'm here to talk to you again about the water, city water outside the city limits. I'm here representing myself, Jiminy Angie Leader, Leonard, Stephen Rebecca Hodges, Stephen D.B. Johnson, Mark and Kate Orvis, Toby and Son Kaufman, Greg Hout, Roger and Nancy Wykenmeyer, Tenner Friend and Muchler, and Ron and Lisa Lee. These are all people that I've been contacting that are interested. We live on Crestline Road in State Route 19. I don't know if you've sent out your letters yet, but none of us have received letters about getting water outside the city limits. I know you guys are really interested in Salt Springs in that direction. I know you're trying to beat the other water company, but we're here to tell you, we all want water. I don't need to send a letter, like I said. I don't know if anybody can answer that for me. Have you sent water, or letters out for the water outside the city limits?
Not yet, no we haven't.
Okay. I just want you guys to know that this is 10, 11 houses. Everybody wants water. We need water. So if you could please keep us in mind, send your letters to us if you really want it, and just want to keep in mind that you guys, we want water outside the city limits. And these are all people who, we've been all in contact with each other. This is just me sending out letters to my neighbors, so if I've got this many people responding just to a fellow neighbor, I'm sure they're going to respond to the city too. So please keep us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You want to make sure that the administration would listen to that.
Sure.
Chief Whitely.
Ben Shul.
Yes.
We're working on a plan right now with the engineers and issues, you know, which where we're going first, along with the Service Committee, you know, that we'll be meeting again shortly with them too, so. We're coming. We just don't know exactly which is going to be first.
I know you talked about sending out letters.
We're going to be doing that. But remember, we're going to be coming up with, calling the Service Committee very quickly and then, you know, go to the next step.
Okay.
Thank you for the work, and we owe you a commission. Take it in the lunchroom here, please.
Is there anyone else? Step to the podium, please. Your name and address.
Joe Graham, 59 South Spring Street, Los Angeles. And I'm speaking as a private citizen at this moment. We were, as we've seen, we're grateful for you guys to come and support our safety forces today, and we are always supportive of our safety forces. But I speak from a personal point of view. In regards to cuts to our safety forces, at this point in time, we would be shooting ourselves in the foot. I have worked as a volunteer helping addicts find recovery for the past 23 years. I have buried more people than could fill these empty seats. And the reason that I have buried so many of them is because they couldn't get access to services. We have come together as a community and done something amazing here. We really have. But this is not the time to pat ourselves on the back and say the job gets done because it's not done. I buried three last year. They're still dying. And if we cut our forces right now, if we cut our police department right now, we've got two fantastic judges right now that are doing an amazing job. We have a community that's actively involved in the problem and trying to find solutions. We have recovery organizations now working in our community, but what ties it all together is our police officers. It's our law enforcement. We can't cut them right now. If we cut them right now, we could eliminate half of this crowd right now, and we'll be able to fill those seats with other people's children, with other young people who are going to die as a result of those cuts. This has actual life and death implications to our community. I see it. I see it personally. Please do not doubt these fine men and women when they tell you that they need, they need the funding. They really do. And I'm here to tell you that, Seth, our community needs this. That's all I've got. Thank you so much. I just...
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? We need your name and address, please.
James Taylor, 538 Southeast Green, here in Sires. I just came to sit just tonight. Glad to let you in. It's been a great night. First, police department. 1999, I'm November 21st, my last drink or drive. I'm a three-time felon. Saw police officers twice. Officer Walker was one of them. But I'm not here for that. I'm here because these guys never gave up on me. So when you say that there's no help for addicts or people struggling, there might be one. If there's one, it's worth it. If there's one, it's worth not cutting because I made it through. Somebody else can make it through. Like I said, been 18 years. I gave my last try. I still have one in my family now. I actually have a daughter in rehab. So we still need the help. Don't cut services. We passed a levy for this. You know, we're working families, and we gave our word to help these officers out because without them, we wouldn't have a community to feel safe in. And it's touch and go every day. Touch and go. I live right across from elementary school. We used to find needles at the school, needles in our yard from the drug house next door that was condemned once and reopened, but it's clean now, thank God. Born a good Christian, but again, without these officers, without Chief Kepke, I was a teenager when I first met him, his rookie year, we've had our moments.
He threw a bowl of...
Cereal. Yeah. Yes. All over, a little bit of heroin, when I was 13.
Be grateful it was only a bowl of cereal. He's not meat, right?
You know, again, these guys, they're stuck with me. I mean, it's what, it was 1990...
1989.
No, 1989. So I don't care. I was raised in this community. This is my community. Don't cut their money, guys. It's not your guys' money. It's our money. It's our community. Come on. Give some common sense. I'm not educated. You guys are. But I have common sense. Put the money where it needs to go. Help our forces out. That's why I got to stay.
Yeah.
No, that's the right one. 1135 Freedom Street, Sires. Sorry, I'm going to get emotional. I don't mean to. I have a 15-year-old son, well, we have a 15-year-old son. He's a part of the Police Explorer Program, a great program for our teens. If you cut funding, that's probably one of the programs that the kids would lose. That's a generation we're losing. We need all the positive services we can keep for our kids, and one of them is the Explorer Program with the police department. So I encourage you to consider the funding for the police department so that, in essence, we can help our teens and our kids. Thank you.
Anyone else to address council this evening? Yes, Governor, please.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but I could...
Would you please come forward?
Robin Mike, 33 East Angeles Road, Sires, Ohio. I'm the commander of the Sires Chapter of Guardian Angels. We came here in 2011, unbeknownst to anybody in town, for one year. We walked the streets. We took in every bit of information that we could take in on all the crimes that was happening in town. By 2012, when we actually became a graduated chapter, we saw a need for the angels here. We had, I think, two police officers per tip at that time. The angels took in over 600 tips. These were tips that were not turned in to the police department. They came to Guardian Angels because they felt, this community felt, they had no police department. The police department was overwhelmed with our tips. Guardian Angels did the investigation on these tips. Before we turn over one tip to the police department, we already know what they're going to find. We give them things, addresses, phone numbers, so we can get them, descriptions of vehicles, what they're passing, where they're going, where they're coming from. We've done this since 2012. If you cut the funding for our police department and our detectives, word's going to get out, and when word gets out, they're going to come back. The drug dealers are going to come back because there's nothing here to stop them. These people that you see in the red berets, this is only the safety team. We have approximately 24 members who is chapter. We're only 24 people. We can't do what these guys do. We can't do what they do with the patrol cars. We're in footwork. We walk the streets, the alleys. When you guys are asleep, we're out there walking. We let you guys know. We let the police department know what we see, what we hear. We're the eyes and ears for the police department. But with them without funding, that's going to put a hole in us. We don't have the training they have. We've got our own training, but we're not qualified police officers. We don't want to be. But we're their help, but we don't have enough help ourselves if you cut their funding. So from the Guardian Angels, we're asking you, please, don't cut the funding. We don't want to see the drug dealers come back and they go. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call? No? Okay.
Ben Shul.
Yes.
You might like to make some comments.
Always.
Okay. Well, thanks for everybody for coming. Chief Tease mentioned, you know, I was the chairman of the levy committee for the first two times that failed, and the last time they ditched me and I won, so. But, you know, I've always been a strong supporter of the safety forces. I see some of the firefighters here that I welcome. We're in a position as elected officials where we're responsible to, we have so much tax dollars to use, you know? In a perfect world, you know, we have unlimited tax dollars, but it's probably not a bad way to let you know now kind of the situation we found ourselves in last year. We had an 11% decrease in tax revenue last year. I'm sure you all didn't know that. That was a substantial drop. In addition to that, we, back in the year 2010, we were getting over a million dollars from funds, like real estate tax, personal property tax, county sales tax, inheritance tax, and local government funds for the state. 2017, we got 584,000. We put all 600,000. That's per year. Our, I'm sure you're not sure what we spend in the police department. Police department budget is about $2.5 million a year. Our safety forces levy last year brought in a little under a million and a half. It was very helpful to us. Take that $600,000 a year that we lost, now we've netted roughly about $900,000. At the same time, we've seen a large increase in poverty in the city. It's gone from about 9% to over 16% in the last seven years. So we have some headwinds that we have been fighting as a city that we have to make do. Last year, you may not know this, but we had a $351,000 budget deficit. Now, taxpayers out here, I'm sure you're, you know, saying, well, we can't run a budget like the federal government. We cannot print money. We have to eventually balance the budget, you know? Fortunately, we were able to have some carryovers from a few years prior that bought us some time. So the things that are facing us are even more difficult decisions than just, you know, adding more firefighters, more police firefighters. We're not going to go back to the voters and raise more money. We don't do that. We have 2% income tax revenue now. So there's only certain options that we have, you know? Now, fortunately, the good news is January and February tax revenues had a small increase. It wasn't a great increase, but it was a small increase over last year. So we're going in the right direction. We've been trending now for really pretty much two years, so. At the same time, we're working, and we don't have a lot on the plate. We're always... We're always working for, you know, to bring new jobs. We have what's called, um, the Safety Forces and, and, and that's part of the budget, we have the Safety Forces Levy, then we have a general government part of what's called the General Fund. The general, uh, government part has, has, in ten years, has grown very little. It's, it's still not much more than what it was ten years ago, it's part of the, our tax revenue. So we're not wasting money. Cities our size have large parks departments, they have, uh, park directors, you know, they spend three, four hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, we have never done that, we've always put Safety Forces first in this community. We funded Safety Forces to a level that has gotten great results. But we find ourselves in a situation, you know, it's not that we're making arbitrary decisions. You, hopefully you can see from the administration, the city council's point of view, that, you know, we're not being onerous in, in the budget. My figures would kind of dispute what Officer Walker said. Uh, last year, we spent, between police and civilians, civilian dispatchers, the actual expenses were two point five sixty-two million dollars. Now, we put in the budget for two thousand and eighteen, two point five one-two million. That's a fifty thousand dollar decrease. It's still a decrease, but it's fifty thousand dollars. The average cost per officer to city taxpayers is over a hundred thousand dollars with wages and with benefits. So, we have in our budget, uh, we've just, we've cut basically half of an officer to try to balance the budget, and we'll pray for a good tax revenue this year. Now, Chief Keppke and, uh, and I met today along with Safety Services, who tried to figure a way, we had, we had retirement last year, we had two police officers left for attrition, tried to figure a way that we can make this budget work, that we can get another officer back in there with the approval of City Council. But, um, you know, we have no intention of, of gutting the Police Department, so, to let your, to allay your fears, I wanted to give you some of the, the numbers that we have, the numbers we are working on, those are all public numbers, you know, we have them here. Um, and to let you know that, you know, Safety Forces are a top priority and have been in this community for a long time, so, that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to thank everybody for coming and being concerned.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we are going to, if there's no one else to address council, we're going to continue on with our meeting, you're all more than welcome to stay, but, uh, if any of you would like to leave at this, this time, or anytime during the meeting, feel free to do so. and so we're coming up with our standing committee reports. Uh, the Economic Development Committee met in special session on Thursday, February the twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, at five fifteen P M. Mr. Foote, do you have minutes of that meeting, please?
Yes, I do, Madam President. Special, uh, committee meeting was called to order at five fifteen, members present were Dan Wireball, myself, and then Mark McKeever arriving at six, five forty P M. The Special Economic Development Committee meeting was called by committee members Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, Doug Coat, Chair, to discuss Board of Zoning Appeals appointments. Board of Zoning Appeals appointments, committee interviewed two candidates to fill a vacancy on the service of Board of Zoning Appeals. Bill Stoker, two oh five North Spring Street, and Tom Rare, four forty-nine Pleasant Lane. The vacancy was created following the decision of Ken Emerson to step down from the board effective December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Legislation will be required to appoint a new member for a term of four years retroactive to January first, two thousand and eighteen. Foote adjourned the Economic Development Committee meeting at five fifty P M.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that meeting? Okay, moving on then, the Besire's Joint Regular Committees met in regular session on Thursday, February the twenty-second, at two thousand and eighteen, at six oh one P M. Mr. McKeever, would you like to get us started, please?
All right, uh, we met at six oh one P M. Members present were myself, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, Doug Coat, and Andrew Shaw. Uh, number one, Besire's City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by Myers at six oh one P M. Number two, public participation, none. And number three, order of committee business, Health and Safety Committee, at six oh one to six oh seven P M. Okay. For the Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, Health and Safety Committee met at six oh one P M. Members present, members are Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, and, and Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chairman, all were present. Number one, traffic control map changes, Besire's Traffic Commission is requesting two changes to the traffic control map. It wants to open the north side of the city hall parking lot alley to allow traffic to turn left to access a business drive-through window. A ninety-day trial ended December seventh, two thousand and seventeen, with no issues reported. The commission also wants no parking signs posted on the west side of Cherry Lane from Euclid to West Oakwood Avenue. A ninety-day trial ended on February ninth, two thousand and eighteen, with no issues reported. McKeever made a motion to request legislation to make the proposed traffic control map changes with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by Voice Boat. Number two, ambulance service. Myers, who is the city representative on the central joint ambulance district, reported on the group's meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. The city's current contract with CJAD expires on December thirty-first, and the group has given the city a deadline of April sixth to notify CJAD of whether the city wishes to remain a member. Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at six oh seven.
Any questions or comments regarding the Health and Safety Committee? Okay, moving on, Public Lands and Buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Uh, Public Lands and Buildings Committee met Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. We began at six oh seven P M. Members present, Bruce Truca, Doug Coat, Mark McKeever, and myself. Uh, city parking lots, a complaint has been received about snow and ice in city parking lot number three at one sixty-six North Poplar Street. Permit parking in the city parking lots was proposed for motorists who wish to park in the lots for more than two hours. With the permit fees dedicated to maintenance of the lots, street funds cannot be used on city parking lots. The permits could also be utilized for the placement of dumpsters. A discussion followed on methods of enforcement for the two-hour parking limit downtown. Bill Stoker, two oh five North Spring Street, suggested signage on the curbs. The matter was continued. Next up was the land acquisition. Law Director Rob Ratliff reported that the city has had discussions with the attorney representing a property owner regarding tax liabilities and liens, in that we will get back to council with more information once it's available. Tower space contracts. The city's contract for internet services with Wavelength ends on April nineteenth, and Ratliff noted that the committee needs to decide whether it wants to continue the relationship with the company, put out a request for other proposals, or go to bid. He suggested an agreement allowing for continued operation of Wavelength on the city's towers could be implemented while the city decides what it wants to do. With advance notice of ordered Wavelength in the event any changes are going to be made. Wavelength owner Kurt Fankhauser, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue, suggested a bidding process for a new contract could be avoided if an exclusively, exclusivity clause isn't included in the contract. The committee requested Ratliff draw up an agreement stating that the city will continue its lease with Wavelength on a month-to-month basis with a hundred and eighty-day notice of termination required to be available before the next committee meeting on March eighth. Wireball recessed the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at seven oh three P M.
Any questions or comments regarding the Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting? None? Moving on to Economic Development, Mr. Foote?
Economic Development Joint Committee meeting was on Thursday, February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, called to order at seven oh four P M. Members present were Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First on the agenda, Besire's Tourism and Visitor Bureau, Councilman Kevin Myers, who is the council's representative on the Bureau, gave a report on the group's monthly meeting held on February twenty-first. The Bureau has plans to move to another location on April first. Annually, the Bureau receives half of the bed packs collected by the city. In two thousand and seventeen, it received twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Second on the agenda, Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. During a Special Economic Development Committee meeting at five fifteen P M, members interviewed two candidates to fill a vacancy on Besire's Board of Zoning Appeals. Bill Stoker, two oh five North Spring Street, and Tom Rare, four forty-nine Pleasant Lane. The vacancy was created following the decision of Ken Emerson to step down from the board effective December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Legislation will be required to appoint a new member for a term of four years retroactive to January first, two thousand and eighteen. Foote chose to hold off on having the committee recommend the nominee to the full council until he could brief McKeever, who arrived late to the special meeting on the interviews. Another special meeting will be held at six thirty P M on Tuesday, March sixth, consider a recommendation. Foote recessed the Economic Development Committee at seven eleven.
Any questions or comments regarding the Economic Development Committee? Okay, if you'd like to finish out, please, uh, joint committee meetings?
Motion to adjourn the Besire's City Council Joint Regular Committees by McKeever and a second by Myers at seven twelve P M. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we have another Economic Development Committee and Special Session this evening at, uh, six thirty P M. We need you to give a brief, uh...
Yes, sir. Special Economic Development Committee meeting called to order Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at six thirty P M. Members present, Monica, were Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself. Number one, the Special Economic Development Committee meeting was called by committee members Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and Doug Coat, Chair, to discuss a Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. Number two, Board of Zoning Appeals appointment, we nominated Bill Stoker, two oh five North Spring Street, and Foote econo, adjourned the Economic Development Committee meeting at six oh seven P M.
Okay, but you also requested legislation, McKeever, please?
Yes. Requested legislation to have Bill Stoker appointed to Board of Zoning Appeals.
A motion by?
Motion by Mr. McKeever, and seconded by Mr. Wireball.
The motion passed.
And the motion passed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that meeting? Okay, um, moving on, we don't have any Traffic Commission minutes, but are there any traffic questions? I can't imagine why everyone's having questions, but, um, anyone have any traffic questions? I'll ask first one then, I guess. You just thought you were gonna get by that.
Back row.
Okay. The, um, I guess the covers came off today at Spring and, uh, Poplar on Mansfield Street.
Did you okay?
I don't know, did it do okay, Chief?
No, did you do okay?
So far, so good.
I did okay.
Great, great.
Well, you know, we're just trying to, to look at everything and streamline, make sure people don't have to wait unnecessarily, and so far, so good, you know? Chief, do you have a comment?
We had, I thought, a very, very good discussion back and forth in Traffic Commission for this ninety-day trial period, because there's some things that logically you can see play out. It no longer is a state highway. The truck traffic is not there anymore, we had a traffic signal. And if you think about the comparable intersections of Poplar and Charles, and there's a traffic signal at the next intersection at Sandusky, and if you were at Poplar and Charles waiting on a red light, you might wait for a cycle while the cycle at Sandusky changes, and you've never had the opportunity to get to Char, to Sandusky, to then tr, take advantage of that green light, which is gonna be shorter. So this is for east-west traffic to have a chance to get to the signals at Sandusky, to then cross Sandusky when it turns green. So I think there's a, you have to look at it at the intersection, then all the way around the neighborhood, and we had concerns, of course, about the, the traffic flow, because the, the school is west of those inters, those three intersections. The kids aren't riding cars to, from school. I counted cars at the school a few occasions, we didn't actually get the car count, but it's not what it used to be at, uh, at the school, coming and going at the secondary school. Although there is, there's a peak in traffic flow at the opening, the closing, at the same time. Spring and Mansfield have about the same traffic flow, but there's definitely less traffic going south at Spring and Mansfield when the school traffic happens. So if we had a sig, if we continue with the signal, what we might see is people needlessly waiting at that red light on Spring to go west, because there's nobody there across from them that hit a wear stop sign. So we'll see how that, bottom line, it's a traffic signal, you still have to stop and walk. The change is the lane usage, because we can't have, we had turn lanes, we potentially could have six vehicles arriving about the same time, having to make decisions, that's a problem. So the lane usage has to be adjusted to, that might be the hardest thing to adjust to.
Once we agree, if we go forward with it, then those two lights will be taken out then, and just be one lane. But we're not taking those out until we see how everyone reacts, and if it's a go, then we'll take it out in ninety days.
Bottom line, it could be a time saver for people going east and west towards the lights at Sandusky.
We are leaving the traffic plants up there blinking red, correct?
Yes, we are.
Per period of time, anyway?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And, uh, traffic signal, or stop sign usage, uh, left yields to right if arriving about the same time, that has to be reminded. Although we have plenty of four-way nears such as in town where that already applies, so hopefully people will be reminded of that.
Thank you. Mr. McKeever?
The only question I had, that I, I had several people brought this up to me, and I never bothered, uh, maybe you have a police officer sitting in that parking lot during the, several different times, just to see how it is for the school traffic?
Yes.
Especially at the Spring and Mansfield, because I had several parents come to me about that, saying, hey, you know, there's a lot of traffic here for their kids going to school, so, it was just a concern, and I thought I'd address that. I said I'd bring it up and let you know what their concern is.
Yeah, we'll definitely be monitoring the traffic flow as part of the traffic study, the best we can, we don't have a traffic count going on it right now.
Right.
Uh, but one can visually observe at peak times what the traffic flow looks like, and then at other times, when it's not peak traffic, and you can see two, three vehicles within sixty seconds moving maybe, and then you just have to remind yourself, hey, this is a four-way stop, just like I'm about to experience at Charles and Spring, just like I'm about to experience up the block at, you know, Poplar, Charles, or Warren and Poplar.
Right.
The same rules apply.
And we did, Chairman, reach out to Superintendent Kim on the staff, and, you know, we, we told him what we're thinking, and we reached out to them for comments, and they were all, they were all in for it.
Yeah, there was a back-and-forth discussion also on whether to do this before the end of the school year, but traffic flow is dependent on school days, so it's more important to get a real study as to what the change would cause for the long term. We did it in the summertime, we went, no, and then school would start, and then find out.
Any other traffic questions, comments? Okay, I made a motion then to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second. Um, where am I here? Lost my spot. Okay. Motion by Mr. Foote, seconded by Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion passed. We now have a report of our city officers. Mayor Reese?
Well, thank you, Madam President. It's been a great day for our public participation.
Yes, it was.
You know, it just kind of reminds us of how important it is to have free speech and democracy, and it'd be great if we had that every week. I'd also like to congratulate Bill for his coming appointment. Thank you. It's been really busy all year long, especially the last two weeks. I'm happy to report that we've reached tentative agreements with both the police and fire unions. We've been in negotiations since, I think, what, three years ago? At least since September. I spoke to the gathering at the Angel Chamber House, breakfast last week. Lots of good news was reported. And our own Gary Hess was there. We're very proud of the work you're doing on Safety Council, so take about for the camera, if you would. Good job.
I have a thanks parade.
Yes, you do. We'll agree with that one. Still working on that plan for a water customer. This is gonna be an ongoing process. We'll present it to council, you know, once the Service Committee and administration agree on everything, so we'll keep you informed. Platoon Street Project is going to be starting very soon. We have a meeting next Monday night. Those letters have been sent out to all the residents in the northern part of Ward 1, Plum Street area, south and north, and it's gonna be at the school. Busiris High School at 6:30 next Monday. All are welcome to attend. Bruce, I don't know if you, did you get a letter for that? You should've, okay. Brand Center Carol Engineers will also be in attendance to answer any questions. We made an announcement last Friday. It was a very good week for Busiris. We were awarded a grant for $125,000 to, at our stage, to the Art Park. As you know, we had four years to get it done. Senator Burke called me a little while ago and said, hey, why don't we consider putting this in the budget? And I said, let's do it, you know. And I told him what we needed, what we thought it was gonna cost, and called me with the good news last week. So we need to thank Senator Burke, if you see him, or if you have his email, send him a note. Also Representative Klein, both of those were instrumental in making sure that the Art Park is gonna be finished. Now we're gonna be meeting with engineers and working on design. I'm not sure it's gonna be finished or a date, you know, whether this year or next year, I'm not sure. It's gonna depend on how quickly we get the design together, so. I think that's it for tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? None? Moving on, Service Safety Director, Mr. Wagner, are you going to read his report?
I will read Mr. Wagner's report from today. Let's start with referrals. I would like to refer the lifeguard manpower to the Finance Committee. We would like to change the head lifeguard position to two assistant managers and change two substitute guards to two non-certified personnel. Also need to refer mutual aid agreement with Liberty Township to the Committee for coverage. Speaking of lifeguards, we are accepting applications for lifeguards and park helpers. Please visit the city website or stop at the mayor's office for an application. Traffic Commission, as you know, we've talked about the 90-day trials for the four-way stops. Also speed limit trials have begun at Beal Avenue to Hopley Avenue and Marion Road from Dr. Griffin's office south to the City Limits, raising that from 35 to 45. And that, well, Beal Avenue up from 35 to 40. The Board of Control will be opening bids on March 27th, 2018, at 10:00 AM right here in Council Chamber, and that'll be for the demolition of the old water treatment plant and the completion of the raw water, I'm describing the raw water line. Resolution number 2062015 was passed for this project on March 12th, 2015. We just mentioned about the Plum Street Project that was awarded to Elite Excavating out of Mansfield. It's scheduled to begin this spring and completion date in the fall of this year. The ODOT State Route 4 North Project, as we've talked about before, will be meeting with ODOT in March. We will be meeting with ODOT in March for a quarterly work plan to discuss this project, and we'll keep you informed if whatever comes out of that meeting. Finally, the Compost Site is scheduled open on Good Friday, March 30th, 2018. Hours will be the same as last year. Wednesdays and Fridays, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If anyone needs to use a compost site outside of those hours, all you have to do is call a wastewater treatment plan at 419-562-8981 and make arrangements for that. I know we had had some calls, people couldn't get there during those hours, so we're happy to make arrangements with you. Just call that number or stop up at City Hall. And that's just a report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to item one, the referral of the lifeguard manpower to the Finance Committee. I need a motion to put that into Finance.
Second.
Motion by Miss Sack, second by Mr. McKeever, put the lifeguard manpower into the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. And any other comments regarding this report? Mr. Wirebaugh?
Yeah, number three, where does that come from, raising that on, well, both of the places? Are we in that big a herd?
Do you want to address that, Chief?
Yeah, Chief.
B Level to Hop, B Level to Hop. Oh, back to speed limits. Yeah, the prevailing, the prevailing speed that people drive reflects that increased speed limit. We don't have speed traps, per se, in town, but when we do stop cars, if they're over the, they're not excessive out there, but there isn't any particular reason to, I guess, be that tight on the speed limit where people naturally feel like, it's wide open, I'm gonna go 45. They don't even think about it, they're going 45 between...
No, I got a ticket there.
We can't void that first ticket. We can't void that ticket to go the speed, maybe being at 45.
Well, I understand, but now I'm careful. But I, I mean, I travel that every day, you know, maybe sometimes more than once, and I know a lot of people think you have to get that Beal Avenue, but I've been around long enough that I remember that Beal Avenue wasn't there and had to go around down south. I'm just glad that we can cut through there at where it's at.
I'll tell you a different story about before Beal Avenue was paved, it was a cornfield, and somebody stole a car in Marion at 2:00 AM and was driving north on Route 4, speeding at 55 to 35, so he had the clock on. We went down Beal, and he was driving a stolen car, and he drove eastbound on Beal, right where the dead end was, and he drove right out into the cornfield. He was looking at the, probably GPS, there was no GPS. It's on the GPS, no. But Beal Avenue is going to see a slight increase, but it's a bigger discussion in staggering speed limits going from 55 to 25, rather than have 55 to 25, having steps of 45, 35, and this is in other areas. In West Mansfield coming into town, we have a school zone at Winter, which isn't in the city, but it affects city. You have a school zone at Busiris, and in between, you can go 55, and then you have to slam the brakes on to 25. That one might, our view, is a more serious issue to address, so the people are driving all the, in the flow of traffic rather than a fast car and a slow car. That's what causes accidents, rear-end collisions, things like that, so that was tabled to discuss further. If we can clean up the speed limit west of town, similar to cleaning up the speed limit on Marion Road, rather than go 55 to 35, it's a natural zone to have a 45 in between.
And I've been, piggybacking on that, we had some complaints from a resident there that trucks were having to slam on their, use their jake brakes, and their windows were vibrating, you know. So rather than having no jake brake ordinance, we thought, okay, let's slow them down from 55 to 45, they wanted to use their jake brake, and then they can go there.
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm just, are we, are we giving up safety for, there was a bad accident back there. Remember the chili cook-off when there was a bad accident out there at the car lot? Does anybody remember that? It was a pretty bad accident, and they're on that, right there on Marion. So that's, that's what comes to my mind, you know. But we'll see how it goes, I guess. I just don't wanna give up safety for getting there 30 seconds sooner, you know. That's, that's my thoughts.
Okay, my question is, is that 40 mile an hour speed limit in effect now, is it marked? Or signs up?
Have not spoken to Jeff Dunne about it. Did he have to appoint or some signs? Yeah.
Well, we can make sure that we get something on access about that. To see, I didn't ask, talk to Jeff this morning, yes?
My husband just asked me about it today because he noticed the speed limits were different, so they are up.
They are up, okay.
So they are up. And that is a 90-day trial that we've got out there then for that. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the Service Safety Director's report? No one, moving on, Law Director?
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of, one update, as you guys may remember, you had voted to join the HB 49 litigation, which is the centralized collection of some of our facets. That had been filed, it was denied by the court judge, it is now unappealed, so that's, that's that for the time being. I have a number of referrals, some I communicate, and I apologize in advance, because my list was changing even as we were here. To health and safety, we need to refer ordinance 52.02, that is our weed and grass loading ordinance. We're gonna try to streamline that process a little bit this year.
That's a codifier, isn't it, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Also, to health and safety is, we're gonna do these all at once, or you want me to?
Keep going.
Also, to health and safety is 931, which is our garbage and rubbish pickup. As you know, we had some issues with couches, mattresses, televisions, those sorts of things. To Public Lands and Buildings and Finance, I need to refer 214 East Perry Street. There's some light at the end of that tunnel. To Service Committee, ordinance 91501, which is, gets into the water line issue earlier, which is our water line and our annihilation statute, our ordinance. And to Service Committee as well, I need to refer our agreement with the Crawford County with respect to Crawford County's operation and maintenance of water lines in the county and our agreement to supply the water to them. Again, that is connected to the expansion of water lines. Looks like that's it. Thank you very much. Second, Mr. Trugan.
Except, well, let's get these in the committee first, okay? And then, you wanna speak to one of these?
Yeah, 931, garbage.
Yes.
You said health and safety.
Yes.
And it has to go to service.
Well, it is our, and I suppose we should go to service as well, but it is our criminal code section for violations of garbage, so, but you're right, it probably should get above just for consideration, should be able to make some changes, you know, greater changes to the criminal party side of it.
Okay. I need a motion then to, we can do this all at once, I think, here, refer to Health and Safety Committee, codified ordinance number 522.02 about weeds and grass, to Health and Safety and Service, codified ordinance 931 about garbage and rubbish pickup, to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance, property at 214 East Perry Street, to the Service Committee, 915, codified ordinance 91501 about water line issues, and to Service Committee, the agreement with Crawford County of the water lines out in the county. Do I have a motion to do all these referrals?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Anything else?
The other property that we talked about last week, we're still researching weed and grass, we need to make sure we know what we're getting.
Okay. Any particular questions for the Law Director? Okay, moving on, Auditor, Mrs. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. You have a statement of cash position, the income tax revenue comparisons, and the revenue tallies, the limits, and you can take a look at where we're at. I have a list of referrals. We will need an appropriation from unappropriated funds in Fund 701 Waterworks slash filtration slash materials and supplies in the amount of $2,500 for repairs to the filtration vehicle. It was apparently involved in a small accident. The insurance check for said repairs has been received already, so we just need to appropriate or get it fixed. We also need legislation to create the category 7525 Waterworks Distribution and the object 23 contractual services within Fund 705 Waterworks Replacement. And in addition, we need an appropriation from unappropriated funds in Fund 705 Waterworks Replacement slash Waterworks Distribution slash Contractual Services in the amount of $100,000, and that's for initial engineering and any additional planning needed for the water line expansion. We also need an appropriation from unappropriated funds in Fund 820, the derelict building liability slash fire department slash other uses in the amount of $17,010.50, and insurance check has been received for the fire loss at 922 Reed Street. And then I'd also like to refer an amendment to Chapter 189 of our city income tax code to adopt Section 718.80 through 718.95 of the Ohio Revised Code as an emergency measure to comply with House Bill 49 of the 132nd General Assembly, since the court cited with the state instead of us. Now, it is in appeals, so we may not have to do this immediately, but I do want it in committee for when we have to deal with it.
That's fine, thank you. Would you please explain about the third item you had in here, about the $17,000 for the insurance for the fire?
Yes, there was a fire at 922 Reed Street, and as required by our ordinances, the insurance company has issued a check for the percentage of loss, which we hold until the property is deemed safe, and then we release it to the property owner. So once I get the okay from the fire department that the property is safe, then it is returned to the property owner.
So we just simply hold that?
We just hold it, more or less, in escrow till we know the property is safe.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding any of these items to put into appropriations? Okay. Then I need an emotion to put into Finance Committee, unappropriated, from unappropriated funds in Fund 701 Waterworks Filtration and Materials and Supplies, the amount of $2,500 for repairs to the filtration vehicle, need appropriation to unappropriated funds in Fund 705 Waterworks Replacement, Waterworks Distribution, and Contractual Services, in the amount of $100,000 for the initial engineering and additional planning needed for water line expansion, and I need an appropriation from unappropriated funds in funding 20 derelict building liability, fire department, other uses in the amount of $17,010.50, and let's stop right there with those appropriations. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wirebaugh, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. I need a, motion to create category 7525 Waterworks Distribution with the object of 23 contractual services within Fund 705 Waterworks Replacement. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wirebaugh. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. I need an appropriation, I already did that one, for the Reed Street. That's done. And then I would also like to refer an amendment to Chapter 189 of our City Income Tax Code to adopt sections regarding House Bill 49 to Finance Committee. I need a motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Second was Mr. Foote. Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Foote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you, that took care of all of them. You have, you were given at the last meeting, the January 2018 Treasurers Report. I need a motion to accept and file this report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We don't have any other reports. I need a motion to accept city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sh, Sean. Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Schott, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you for that. This is where we have visitors' input regarding standing or special committees and/or city officers. Does anyone wish to address City Council this evening? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
We have two pieces, ordinance number 4, 2018, amending the traffic control map and file established by Sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Visaris, Ohio, to open the north side of the City Hall parking lot alley to allow traffic to turn left to access the Morning Glory Bakery right through window, and to place no parking signs on the west side of Cherry Lane from Euclid Avenue to West Oakwood Avenue. That's referred to the Health and Safety Committee. Resolution number 214, 2018 pursuant to subsection A entitled Establishment under Section 1141.03 entitled Board of Zoning Appeals, under Chapter 1441 entitled Administrative Bodies and Their Duties, under Title VII entitled Zoning Administration and Enforcement, under Part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Visaris, Ohio. The Visaris City Council hereby appoints William Mace Tucker, presently residing at 205 North Spring Street, Visaris, Ohio, to a four-year term as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, commencing retroactive to January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency. That is referred back to Economic Development.
I need a motion to accept this as a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truca, to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number 4-248, 2018 is referred back to Health and Safety Committee. Resolution number 214-2018 is referred back to Economic Development Committee. This is the time we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Anyone? None? Do we need a recess?
No. Please.
Please, no. Committee reports on pending legislation. Health and Safety Committee?
Health and Safety is favorable to ordinance number 4-2018 of the traffic control map changes.
Economic Development?
Economic Development Committee is favorable to Resolution 214-2018 Board of Zoning Appeals Appointment.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this, these reports?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Schott, to accept the reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 4-2018, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
ordinance number 4, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 4-2018?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Ordinance number 4-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed Resolution 214-2018, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals Appointment, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number 214, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 214-2018?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution 214-2018 is duly adopted. Okay. Moving on with old business. Anyone have any old business they want to bring up this evening? No one? Okay. New miscellaneous business. The annual reports from all the different departments are in your pockets. Take time to read it. If you have questions, it's a good time to give us a call, somebody in the administration or me or the superintendent, whoever it might be, if you have questions about what's in their report. Tuesday, March 13, is Special Health and Safety Committee meeting at 5:00 p.m., and that will be duly publicized, correct? Tuesday and Wednesday, March 27 and 28, is extravaganza at Visaris Hospital Auxiliary. Thursday through Saturday, March 29 through the 31st, is a Pasha play at Visaris Nazarene Church. Friday, March 30, is Good Friday. City offices will be closed. We will not be picking up trash, correct, on that Good Friday?
We'll not be.
Good Friday, you put it out on?
We put it on Monday at 7:00.
Monday at 7:00, you should put your trash out there. Okay? There was one other thing that occurred this last week, and the mayor and the police chief and I were all there, they shared with the parents and guardians of the children at Visaris City Schools, would you like to address that, please?
It was called Stop It, and it had nothing to do with four-way stops. It had to do with zero tolerance for bullying, and it comes, it's an app on the phone called Stop It that allows someone who doesn't feel like they have someone to go to the opportunity, like Mr. McKeever, he could, if he's being bothered by someone around him, if he can't take the information from somebody, he could send that message in his phone, and the school administrator would deal with it directly and involve law enforcement if necessary. And it's the same privilege that someone attending a sporting event, a venue has, if there's fan abuse, they can call for help using that device. It's a great thing, if you think of it in that way. We all have a chance of voice helping.
Did you mention it was anonymous?
It is anonymous. And the school, that way, the issue of bullying doesn't stay there, and the school can address the most serious problems directly, explicitly.
And the part that I liked about it, that they said if someone sends something in, it remains anonymous, but you will get a comment back, or getting, get further questions back from someone who's there monitoring those text messages coming in, and try to establish a dialogue and then give the person that's sending it some direction as to what they should do next. So it was, I was very impressed with it. And I know they were spending, the next day, they were spending one and a half, I believe, with the students going over with that. And of course, in different areas, it's age-appropriate.
Correct.
As to what all that entailed.
And there was a lot of participation, questions about the what-if question, because there's another side, and the schools as well, where are those aggressing them as well. So I think they go into that open eyes, and it improves communication. There's so many studies out there about the kids being too dependent on those devices, but we all have them, it seems, in the workplace and at school, and it's a app that allows us to make better use of the device.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a celebration, too, that we're going to ask Mr. Schott if you'd like to share some good news with all the people out there. You have a new member of your family.
Yes, I do. We've adopted a little girl about a week and a half ago, so, name's Mel, and she's six months old.
Congratulations. That is absolutely... Is there any other new business anyone would like to bring up this evening? If not, we need to excuse council members who are absent, and that would be, Mr. Myers is not with us this evening, so I need a motion to excuse him from council.
So moved. He agreed to something back.
You might want to be careful, but...
Okay, motion. Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passed. The joint regular committee meetings, all referrals from this council meeting and any open project list may be discussed during the committee meetings. The referrals from this evening are...
We have three 90 referrals from the Service Safety Director to Finance. We have the lifeguard positions and manpower. We have three from the auditor, all of them are to Finance. We have three appropriations. We have the Water Works funding, which is a category and object creation, and we have the HB 49 compliance. We have five from the Law Director. The property parcel at 214 East Perry goes to public lands and buildings and finance. The weed and grass codified ordinance goes to Health and Safety. The garbage pickup ordinance, these are all codified ordinances, goes to Health and Safety and Service. The water line ordinance goes to Service. And the county maintenance of the water lines outside of city limits, that goes to Service Committee. Any committee already and on the agenda, most likely for Thursday, in public lands and buildings, we have the tower space contracts, and in Finance, we have sewer groups 1 and 2. And that's it.
Yeah. Madam President?
Yes.
Todd, did you mention the referral of mutual aid agreement?
That has not been referred.
I did, I did.
You did?
Yeah, I did. Mutual with Liberty Township tonight.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. He said that, I don't know if you...
I did not hear that at all. Did I turn him out?
Yeah.
He turned him out.
Okay. So we do need to vote on that. You want a mutual aid agreement with Liberty Township?
Yeah, mutual aid agreement for fire protection with Liberty Township.
With Township, okay. So I need a motion to put that into Health and Safety. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. There was nothing else that anyone had, so I need a motion to adjourn, though.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Sack, to adjourn. And so we are adjourned at 8:43 p.m. Thank you.